No, I didn't remember if that's the one.
Okay, thank you.
Noel, Noel Mike.
How you doing?
Hi there.
And you get the big table.
Nobody else.
Well, nobody can sit with anybody anymore.
Yes, six oh one, I would like to call this meeting of the Rockbridge Public School Board to order, and I invite everyone to stand. At this time, I will take a roll call vote. Director Tamero. Director Mannenin. Director Schober. Director Anderson. Director Baraboo. Director Yuhan. Director Riordan. Director Lottegar. Director Saether. Director Sorkin. And Director Addy is out tonight. At this time, I would consider additions or deletions to the agenda. I think we need to make a couple of, um, I would entertain a mo- a couple of, a motion to, um, add to the agenda. I can put that both on the consent agenda.
Could you speak up over those?
Support, burden.
There's a motion to add to the consent agenda. The hiring of Elsable and to approve the hiring of Melinda Asma. And those materials were passed out. Um, so that was a motion by Director Anderson in support by Director Riordan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, any additional discussions?
What's the, um, is there an agenda, two hires for Elsable?
Yes, that was what's up. Ah, thank you. Oh, sorry, yes, Ms. Bowe is not a new hire, it's just Melinda Asma. So Director.
I'll get another.
Director Anderson is amending his motion.
So.
And Director Riordan is supporting. Any discussions? Any discussions? She is already employed by the district, so we don't need to approve that. Thank you for clarifying. Any additional discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Do we have to do a roll call?
Yes.
It's Monday. Director Tamero. Director Mannenin. Director Schober. Director Lottegar, or Director Saether. Director Lottegar. Director Anderson. Director Baraboo. Director Yuhan. Director Riordan. Director Sorkin. And Director Sunquist is a yes. So there are twelve in favor, um, motion passes.
Eleven. Addie's not here.
Correct. Hopefully, I'm just getting warmed up, I'll get better as we.
That's okay.
Um, next would be an adoption of the agenda. Oh, yes. I would, um, also entertain a motion to adopt approval of the window treatments. There was, uh, handout, either passed out or at the, available at the table, um, and that would be this by Kraus Anderson. So I would entertain a motion to add that to the agenda as well. Support. Director Anderson in support by Director Saether. Any discussion on that? Any discussions? Any discussions? I will take a roll call vote, um. Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Saether? Director Lottegar? Director Riordan? Director Yuhan? Director Tamero? Director Mannenin? Director Schober? Director Anderson? Director Baraboo? And Director Sunquist is a yes. That would be eleven in favor, um, none against, motion passes. This time, I would invite any, um, public comment regarding the meeting agenda. I know we had received an email, I'm sure, I don't know if all the board members had an opportunity to see that. Um, I would just note that that's included as part of the record, um, it will be available as part of our online agenda. And we've all, um, had an opportunity to review that, and if not, um, we'll review it after the meeting. I know there was a request to take some action, but, um, it's not an agenda item, and we will, we will be taking no action regarding that email.
Was it requested to be read during visited input?
Nope, I'm not going to read it, it's part of the record, it's unnecessary to be read.
I just asked if it was requested, because I, if I understand, you requested it to be read.
I, I, I'm not sure, because the email came in, I, I had a chance to quickly glance at it, but it just came in this afternoon.
Did Stacy get it? Stacy, did you get it?
The only, the only thing I'd say, um, Madam Chair, is that this, there was very few things, if any, that were on tonight's agenda, and we just can't have people starting to hit us with poker, so.
Certainly, and the, the business of the board is to address the items on the agenda, and we don't add things last minute at, um, public request, certainly we, um, entertain public comments that relate to the agenda items, um, but that doesn't necessarily translate into action items. So again, I would just note that it is made part of the record, and will be available to the public. Um, and I don't know that there was any other public input regarding any meeting on the agenda. At this point, I would consider the consent agenda as amended. Support. Motion by Director Schober with support by Director Baraboo.
No, Lottegar.
Or Lottegar, sorry. Double whammy. And I will take a roll call vote on this as well. Director Tamero. Director Mannenin. Director Schober. Director Anderson. Director Baraboo. Director Saether. Director Lottegar. Director Riordan. Director Yuhan. Director Sorkin. And Director Sunquist is a yes, motion passes, eleven to, eleven with zero nays. Moving on to recognition and reports, before we get to the superintendent at eight point one, I'm going to insert case A as, um, the approval of window treatments by Kraus Anderson, and I believe that we have Pete Chauvin here to present. Did I say your last name correctly? Thank you. Great.
Uh, for the window treatment of the Ambles River Elementary School. Um, they did mail in their bids, but it did not make it to bid day on time. So that was the only bid we received for the treatment. Other, uh, window treatment bids, I mean, try to go walk over to the contractor, I still lose as well. Uh, he worked on it for a few days, ended up pulling back, um, just to feel about the, the workload that he has and traveling up here to the side of the project. So this is the only bid that we got from the contract, I think it's very, the total amount was five thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. And that is what we're having to throw.
Any questions? I, I just have a question, is this in line with what the estimate was?
Actually, we are under budget, so we're at two hundred and one thousand, our estimate budget.
Motion by Director Baraboo, do I have support?
Support for the lot.
Any additional discussions? Any other discussions? Any discussions? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Director Yuhan? Director Riordan? Director Lottegar? Director Saether? Director Sorkin? Director Baraboo? Director Anderson? Director Schober? Director Mannenin? Director Tamero? And Director Sunquist is also a yes, motion passes with eleven yays, zero nays. Thank you. Agenda item eight point one is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think my mask comes, it's a little easier to hear. Um, I'm going to do kind of a little different admin report, primarily to set the stage for what is about to come. And it's leading to the main question of tonight, which we will ask you to make at the end of the meeting, which is, how are you recommending, how do you want school to open? And we have a slew of folks here who will tell you what the plan is. You've got tech, you've got transportation, and you have some survey information. Uh, we had the advisory committee meeting, you have all of the feedback from the advisory committee meeting, so you can see all of the comments that were made. You can see the results from the survey that we put out. Eighty percent of our parents, at the time that we did the survey, um, said that they would rather go into option one, which is school in session, or hybrid, or some type of hybrid distance learning. Twenty percent of our parents said, let's just do distance learning. Um, and then you also have some additional information there to look at. So the primary purpose of lunch of tonight is for you to listen to what we think we can do, what the principals think we can do, and believe we can do, um, from transportation and get a technology update. And this all heads towards the question, um, that you will need to answer, is what is your recommendation as force of Rockbridge Public Schools? We have, at the very end, um, there is a resolution that's coming from M S B A, that resolution we are bringing to you for your consideration. You do not have to do that resolution, but if you choose to go in that direction, that would be our recommendation at this moment in time. So everything you're about to hear is all geared toward the one question, um, which you need to tell us, how do you want us to begin school? That doesn't mean that how school is going to end, it doesn't mean that that's the way it's going to work out, but at least at the very beginning, so we can give parents and students, um, start giving them information, and getting, zeroing in on the exact things, so we know exactly who wants distance learning, who wants to come to the school, and who wants all sorts of different things. But we cannot provide that information until you tell us what you want to do about the start of the school year. Does that make sense, as far as what you're held is heading towards the main question? All right, so that's my report, so Madam Chair can leave the stage, um, so you can listen to the really interesting people helping out.
All right, thank you. Agenda item nine point one is consider approval of the twenty twenty-one contract for avid coach Alicia Schroder. There was, um, the con- or the agreement, proposed agreement in the, in our board book. I don't know if anyone has any.
Oh.
That must have been on the consent agenda. I apologize, this is new format. Here, right, Director Saether, thank you. Nine point one, consider approving a grant to the amount of three thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars for the Virginia tenants for court dividers, and that's to be submitted for consideration to the Virginia Community Foundation. Motion by Director Mannenin is supported by Director Saether.
This was a blue price, and it was, and, uh, three to four different grants, it was like that last week, or two weeks ago. And one of them, two of them, one of them needed clarification, uh, State High School used to do that for us. The other was, uh, already been paid, so we didn't feel that it needed to be done. So, um, this is just a very small portion of what the, um, tenants, um, submitted. We've got some major changes going on, and these are the things that we have gone before, so. And this is, all we have to do is okay.
Any other questions, or any other discussions? Anything else?
I'll be abstaining, because I'm on the Virginia Community Foundation.
Thank you, Dr. Riordan. Any other discussions? All right, Director Tamero? Director Mannenin? Director Schober? Director Anderson? Um, Director Baraboo? Director Saether? Director Lottegar? Director Yuhan? Director Sorkin? And Director Sunquist is a yes, the motion passes, um, with nine yays and two abstentions. Agenda item nine point two is discuss the submitted application for the Rockbridge School Board vacant director seat. And these two letters were passed out tonight, we've got applications from, um, Mark Forty and, um, Catherine Disterhaus. And the board can decide tonight how we want to go forward, um, we could either do a motion to approve one of these applicants tonight, since we just have two, um, or we can do an interview process. I think that time is of the essence, um, so maybe we can have a motion and have some discussion about, um, our applicants and how we want to go forward. Motion to appoint, appoint Mark Forty by Director Baraboo, and that was support by.
Director Lottegar.
Open for discussion.
Normally, I would be, um, well in support of an application process, but I do think it, because it's such a limited time with, what was the next four, five months, um, four months, that, that you think an appointment would be better and given, um, and it's unfortunate, because, um, Catherine Disterhaus could be very, um, filled, is wonderful in this position too, I just, it takes a lot to get up to speed on a school board, and given, or you background and experience with it, and I just think it would give you a transition for that, just because of the time, um, such a short time.
Thank you, Director Saether.
I agree.
Any additional discussions?
I believe that the only fair thing to do would be to interview, we could do very quick interviews, it wouldn't take much longer, and I think that's the only fair thing to do.
Thank you, Director Sorkin. Any other discussions? Any discussions? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to appoint Mark Forty to the vacant seat, um, I will be doing a roll call vote. Director Baraboo? Director Anderson? Director Schober? Director Mannenin? Director Tamero? Director Saether? Director Lottegar? Director Riordan? Director Yuhan? Director Sorkin? And Director Sunquist is a yes, motion passes with ten yays and one nay. Now I think what everyone's been waiting for tonight is the update on the start of the school fall twenty twenty. And I will invite our admin team to come up and. I, certainly, I, I think that. I think what I'd like to do is have the team come up and present, and then, um, I think it's, I think let them present, and then you guys can. Although I think Director Saether really wants to talk about what she.
Good evening, I think you know, I'll sort of, as a reminder, you will see your admin team representing every school within the district. Um, and so originally, what you'll see on your plan, on your agenda, is that each school was going to present independently. We decided that because most of the information would replicate over and over and over again, that in the interest of time, um, that we would come up and present together. So, um, as we get started, kind of the first thing that we all sat down and talked about was, regardless of what model we choose to do, whether we choose to stay in person, choose to do the hybrid model, or choose to go distance learning, these seven elements were critical to us across the board. And so every decision, and every precaution, and every recommendation that you're going to see come forth tonight, made sure that we could tick all seven of these boxes every single time. And so the first, of course, is to focus on the health and wellness of our staff and our students. We needed to make sure that we are taking their safety as the utmost priority. When you get to, um, the next several, you'll, you'll see down the list, number three going with that is minimize exposure. We want to take a peek at passing times, we want to take a peek at sizes, things like that, and here's, talk a little bit more about that. But as we go through the model, we also wanted to look at ball point number two, and quality relationships. So last spring, we were fortunate enough that our students had already built relationships with their teachers. And so when they were forced into distance learning, they knew what to expect from their educators. This is a very, very different scenario for a first grader or an eleventh grader who has not met their teacher to try to build a relationship. So some of the recommendations you're going to see today are our best at how we can build relationships at the fastest level. Um, as you go down to number four, we want to make sure all of our models are quality and hands-on. We want to ensure that we don't fall into the trap that's very easy to fall into, of here's the chapter, answer the question, here's the worksheet completed. We cannot let COVID impact the way that we provide education. Which led us to number five, that whatever we choose has to be adaptable, every type of model we place has to be replicated across all three scenarios, so that if we end up in a quick forty-eight hour turnaround into hybrid learning, that the students know what to expect. Ball point number six was about synchronous and asynchronous learning, which are just really big fancy words for all learning at a scheduled time, or learning on your own chosen time. And we heard, um, loud and clear against the distance learning feedback from last spring, both of us chose asynchronous learning. We said, we're going to push it out to you, what works in your family, works in your family, get it back to us when you can. But our parents actually came back and said, you know what, we need you to have a little bit more synchronous learning, I need predictable time that my child needs to log in, and so we want to balance both of those. And then finally, we wanted to ensure that across the platform, across K twelve, they're using the same platform. So instead of a, parents who have a kindergarten or a fifth grader and eleventh grader using C TAW, Ed Remind, and Coolidge, and trying to navigate all three, that we settled on Coolidge for all children, K twelve across the spectrum, um, and, and a strong devotion that even in in-person learning, our kids will be trained from day one how to get on Coolidge, how to download their materials, how to, um, complete them electronically, and then re-upload that to their teachers, so that if there is a quick forty-eight hour turnaround, we can do that in a quality situation. So as we go through, you're going to care hearing about some precautions, and then some recommendations, so I'll pass it to.
So as Lisa said, um, the next four slides that we have are precautions that we will be, um, putting at stake in, in our building. Um, first one you see there, uh, we will have optioning, so that navigating the, um, Bayless County numbers, um, kind of rise in that wave of, if we're in school learning, if we're hybrid, or if we're distance, depending on how many cases we have in Bayless County. With option B, also the offset for families, um, any family can choose to go full distance learning, um, in the state office. So, um, the second, well, the teachers will be trained in how to, by this, uh, by this teacher, this is the model, so we're having some trainings and things that will help our teachers, um, with distance learning, so that's not, has not been their typical, um, teaching style. Uh, number three, we will validate the data from parents, assign teacher accordingly at these trade levels. So taking that data from our surveys, and, and how many kids are going to be choosing distance learning, how many are going to come back, and either the numbers, we, um, will assign you to accordingly, and the other numbers. Students will report straight to designated areas upon arrival, um, trying to minimize that coming link, that cross contamination with us. Um, so we're having them report to their designated areas, so that they're not congregating. Um, we do visitors campus, trying to keep outside visitors as minimum, um, to, as most of the time. And the last one on this page is probably not state guideline, hurting person in hybrid learning, um, all of our staff, which we were in P P E. Um, and we're also considering some dividers, and some social systems, and other things like that.
Some more precautions. We'll work with the students in all three scenarios, using the same platform. This will allow our students to become more familiar with the platform, and that's education in the event that we do suddenly go into hybrid or focused learning. So while in school, we will make sure that they know how to do it, should they end up at home, full time, or even part time. Uh, we'll work with all families, students who choose to do full distance learning, and educate them on the tools, the plat- platforms being used. We will make sure that all the kids know how to use it, and all the families will go to home, obviously, with all of our P P E will meet, but everybody who needs to learn how to do it, if they're choosing distance learning, we'll make sure of that. We're, we will work with all the families that have concerns and questions about COVID, and the COVID-style learning. Our doors will always be open, we'll listen to everybody concerned. We'll have free points to movement and map breaks throughout the day. We'll also be taking our classroom outdoors for learning as much as possible. So head stop, this is an elementary deal. If you get a phone call that their child was outside and it was missing, that's because it's COVID, and we're trying to get kids outside, even when it might be missing a little bit, when traditionally, we may not have taken them out. Just something like that to try to get them out. You'll probably see a lot more outside, even if it's for ten minutes, even if it's for fifteen minutes, than you would in a traditional school day, because we're really trying to get the kids outside to any possible learning that we can. Um, we'll keep the windows open where applicable, as the weather permits, and, um, we will consider making the plan to check all individuals entering the building. All right, some more precautions, uh, we, we will be focusing as much as possible. Some of the, uh, parents that we have here, special teachers, uh, they likely report to classrooms instead of, it's going to music, the teacher may come to them. Um, lunch scenarios, we've discussed lots of lunch scenarios, depending upon, uh, where we're at, which school you're at. Uh, they may, we might use personal lunchroom, and both of them within the lunchroom, we may, without our safety, we may use classrooms. That's just going to depend on how much the kids, and, and how they can execute that. Uh, playground to reset types, we will standard them as well, um, just to, to have students on the playground, uh, and we'll try to have students using both of the classes, uh, that have talent as well. Directional signage will be provided always, um, as we have half the time throughout the day. We're going to just direct the kids to, uh, table rights. Uh, we are considering safer locker times in what Congress is congregating, especially in K through six. Um, such as well, we're considering not having lockers. And we'll also provide individual supplies for the students, uh, kids will come with their own things and that's things they get to use.
Our last precaution changes this one, but we do share some that, these are ones that are all in common, these people. We do have a couple more slides that will be unique to K through six and unique to seven through twelve. Um, but this is all that we have in common. We definitely want to establish a schedule for cleaning and disinfecting, disinfecting the high-touch surfaces, the door knobs, um, and anything that is, is commonly touched multiple times, and then of any shared equipment. And we'll make sure that, uh, teachers have these supplies in their classrooms. I could see at the high school level especially, that maybe before they go to the next class, that they put on gloves and maybe with wipe, wipe down the area that they were at. Um, what time we'll tell them if we get to go to find our details. Um, we will teach students to, the proper hand washing techniques, mask wearing, social distancing. Students and families will be informed of all transportation for the college procedures. So we more than likely will have, um, staggered times for pickup or drop-off. We just need to get those details higher up. Um, and we also will encourage the parents to bring their kids and pick their kids up from school if possible. And surprisingly, in the survey, many people, families, said that they could bring their kids to and from school. So that helps us a little bit time. I was very surprised by that. We more than likely will not be using water colognes. I know at Ellis Gilbert High School, we do have the water cologne, that has the box that you can fill a bottle on. Um, and hopefully we still use that, but not the drinking cologne. Um, removal of classroom furniture, and that not, that's not usually cleaned or does not allow social distancing. So some of the class seats, we might not be able to have, um, because it's hard to clean those. And we also might have to take into effect that we may need more seats in the classroom. So we can't have multi-furniture in there. We may need to remove as much as possible so that we have room to be able to use the kids though. And next, Shannon, with early childhood.
So what we're looking at, we are, we're from all the state guidelines, as, like, K-12, this is a couple of additions. Um, our little guys will be wearing masks or shields. Kind of looking at, um, one thing we have changed from after is that we are going to assign iPad for, um, the same platform, the quality platform. And what we want to create is that relationship with parents on how we're contacting them and sending them things. So it's, so in, in, we are in classes, short, short periods, short lessons online, but actually training that kind of how to use that platform. A lot of parents, it will be their first time actually using our platform. One thing we're sure that's different is there is going to be more transportation, just with the limited seating that we have, that we're choosing not to at this time. Um, we are, and luckily, we're in person, so that's A to CSD classes. Um, so we are having something else, but they are going to be limited classes, so smaller numbers that will be accepted in our chair. Um, so we will have some parent student classes, and that would be a parent class. And then some, this is family education, where the activities are, um, doing that are going out for parents. So we consider that it's a learning task for teaching parents what to do with their children at home. Um, EPCs, they're going to enter in assigned doors and have, um, protocols to that for standing by to be boarding coming in. Because they are, they're coming in, we're going in. And just working on trying to make those classes slightly smaller. Um, kind of looking at our current data right now, we're just learning for a three-year-old, we have five within our district, and say four-year-olds to eleven altogether that are tuning in since learning. And as we know, numbers are changing daily, so I can see that this number is going to probably grow bigger, even more so than it is.
Okay, moving on to the elementary, um, this is some of our numbers that we have. Um, this is our combined data for our K-6 elementary students, both out of the K-10 that have a Gilbert site. Uh, when we looked at the option A, which is riding the wave of the, the Bayless County numbers, or option B is full distance learning. Uh, if you look down, there's seventy-seven, or almost seventy percent of our families chose option A, had I missed a survey, and twenty-two percent, um, were looking at distance learning for all of our elementary students.
Uh, and then, there's just, I'm going to make the numbers for, uh, we had, again, seventy-three, with about seventy-four percent of our respondents that selected option A. And option B, we had about, that's over two people today that's in the, in the survey. And, uh, uh, so these numbers are fluid, um, and we do not represent everyone, but it's, uh, representation what we have now.
If, if I can just clarify, when you say option A, and then I just heard riding the wave, and I think that makes me understand it better, that basically whatever category we're in here, we'll do, so if it's under ten, it'll be in-person learning for all students.
Correct.
And is that specific to the block cities, or is the county concerned that there's a large disparity between Bayless County as a whole and entire area?
Are you, are you suffering?
Uh, yes, I believe we'll be able to look at local areas, which in Ellis Gilbert, right here, because what happens when the loot, I don't think that should impact us.
I did hear that the county was considering doing a north release of information, uh, St. Louis County stuff. Sure that they were going to release that number down.
Yeah, even, even the loot, uh, request that it's the loot only.
Okay. Good question, then. All right, and this is Virginia's K-6 data, very similar, about eighty, twenty, seventy-nine point four, and twenty point five of people choosing option A, which is in the pool slash hybrid, should it move to that? And right off the bat, twenty percent are choosing no, we're going to stay home and do distance learning. That is super helpful information to us in planning. Now we know which kids are coming and which kids are staying home. It's great data.
So this slide is a combination of all the students that are choosing to do distance learning, um, in our district. So there are a total number of thirty-one students in kindergarten, twenty-nine in first grade, twenty-eight in second grade, forty-three in third grade, forty-five in fourth grade, thirty-five in fifth, and twenty-nine in fifth grade.
Um, and some of the sample schedule considerations that we have for the elementary, um, I know it's just, um, the reasoning side. So we, we combine some of our classes for our rest list to get a little bit bigger, when we take one class, we split it to another class. So we're going to avoid that combining of the classes, we're trying to do that, and sort of do that cross-contamination as much as possible and as possible. Um, students will participate in one special for a consecutive period of time, rather than switching specials immediately back to school. We're going to try to work both specials. Specialist teachers are seeing the same students for a consecutive, longer consecutive period of time, rather than switching what they're seeing all, all the students that they're seeing. Um, and if possible, one or more teachers per grade level will be assigned distance learning, rather than asking the teacher to do both online and in-person learning for students that's like the distance model. So picking, choosing, um, a teacher to work specifically with the distance learning students, and teachers that are specifically working in classrooms, maybe through the hybrid and, and stuff.
Do you think that, that my other slide, um, there could be some, um, teachers working with group kids that have been, you, from Gilbert, you from Virginia, we're going to treat those kids as one group, so we can have a focus teacher in those schools.
And so now you're going to see, uh, three or four slides of the same information with seven through twelve grades. So the first slide that you'll see is our combined data, um, of all school seven, twelve. You'll see about seventy-eight, almost seventy-nine percent select option A, riding waves. Um, and option B is about twenty-one percent right now.
Uh, here's the seven, twelve data for Ellis Gilbert, again, uh, this is all the Bayless County, one and a half.
And Virginia data specifically, you see about seventy-seven percent on option A, and almost twenty-two percent on option B. So you'll see that final slide.
So this is a total, again, of different, um, wide thirty-eight. Seventh graders are choosing to do online distance learning. Thirty-five eighth graders, thirty-two ninth graders, forty tenth graders, twenty-sixth eleventh graders, and twenty-eighth, all three.
And as one of the, let me interject, one of the walkaways, uh, school board members, one of, wasn't different. If you ever hear people say, "Kids in Ellis Gilbert and parents are so different than kids and parents in Virginia", I don't see it. It's the same group of parents and kids thinking the same kind of thought. Far more similar than different.
So, um, seven, twelve considerations that we're looking at, um, we always want to keep in mind that we're trying to really mitigate the risk of transmission. So we're always trying to think of the, how can we reduce the transmission, um, as much as possible? So we met with our, our site team, seven through twelve, which is how many teachers were on that site, about twenty, twenty-one? Yeah, teachers combined between Ellis Gilbert and Virginia on our site team. And that was them about, um, options. And the site team did decide that this, going to a four-period block, rather than a seven-period day would be better. Because if you think about it, kids, uh, on the hallway, you know, seven different times in between classes. So if we went to a block schedule, they would have, you know, there's four blocks. Most kids would take, you know, three classes, um, or the four, three blocks or four blocks. So that would lessen the amount of traffic in the hallways than we'd need. So that's what we're looking at. Um, also, Lisa talked about building a quality relationship. Well, if we have four eighty-nine minute blocks, um, that's going to give them more time to develop relationships with the students right away from the guest楼, before we would have to, you know, hopefully we don't have to, but, um, the possibility of going to a hybrid or to distance learning, that we'd have more time to develop those relationships with a longer block. Um, and they would really be able to practice, um, project-based learning, cross-page learning, um, with a more, a longer block. And if we do go to that in the future with our new career academy, um, that still needs to be determined if we'll be walking there. So at least teachers would have the time and the, to practice having a longer lesson, making it more classroom-based. And then depending on the numbers, um, I could see, uh, how many kids are doing distance learning? If you're teaching English seven, and you teach five blocks throughout the school year, then four of them may be in-person. But that fourth one may be a distance learning, that's, it doesn't mean for those students taking English seven, for example.
Um, here's a couple of scenarios, but before I go through those, I wanted to stop both, stop four, ten, so here. Again, we will be alert to both, um, all the back end, it's very important, minimizing exposure and smooth transitioning in scenarios versus in-person, hybrid, distance, or the block schedule. The student's struggling four classes, teachers only teaching three or two classes. So then, either transition to hybrid for the teachers and students, and either transition to distance. If they're, like, you're in a classroom, have those classes, because most of that, that's whatever it may be. So with that said, just a couple of simple schedules, um, here, here's stuff, very typically, uh, they might have English through all year. Well, in a block schedule of this type, it would have English for first semester, possibly math for second semester, and you'd see all the right. Um, we do also open up a, maybe spot years for enrichment or study hall or elective. Because in a block schedule, students have eight, up to sixteen classes versus seven, it's a pretty big. Well, just a couple of examples, like, uh, question, Todd, I mean, if they haven't signed up, I mean, last spring, are they going to be able to sign up for, I mean, are we going to have to go through registration all over again?
We'll have to do some re-registration, but every student, what they register, always registers for their preferences and then alternates. So we already have three to four extra, all things, we might need to purchase, so we do have information to operate on.
All right, I was just wondering if, if, all of a sudden, we've got this opportunity from all the, like, this.
Will they ask and require any of those type of things to be available?
Yeah, for example, then, maybe just one semester, in this scenario, where the other person is still fighting to open up the opportunity for them to take them. Or just try and require students to... You just figured out that you're...
Where will it kind of go? You got that, you're right. And so to kind of go, to put your two questions together, like Todd said, there's an extra block. We have a lot of students that, like, eighth grade avid, for example. They really wanted to take pre-engineering back by a different, like, every eighth grader thinks. But they're also using students, and so they couldn't fit avid into their schedule. In an eight-period block, they have an extra block, and they get all of that, but they're avid, so it's actually helpful.
So just, uh, I'm visual, I don't know if you are, but I needed to see what a sample bell schedule would look like for students. So you can see that there are four blocks laid out there, um, they are eighty-nine minute blocks. Block one and two, um, are solid eighty-nine minute blocks. Block three, um, one group, probably our junior high students, it would be a solid block. Um, they'd have their lunchroom at the floor, and then they would have their, their block. Group B, because of how it lays out, um, would have a split period. And so they would go to class for their fifty minutes, then they'd have lunch, and they'd go right back to that same class for thirty-nine. And I know that doesn't sound ideal when you think about it, but I'll remind you that our traditional bell schedule was fifty-minute periods. So that first one feels the same, and it's thirty-nine additional minutes to finish the projects that they're working on. So it needs to work, and then you have period four, your block four, is the same thing. So just under some quick math, in the seven, three days, students typically have three hundred and fifty minutes of instruction daily. Um, in this four-period block, students actually have three hundred and fifty-six minutes of instruction daily. So also, we'll do a four-period block, actually add it, um, to a student's schedule. And then, of course, we still let, we let stay short, because we are going to win some pretty significant collaboration and training that. And because Todd and I are so good at doing things, and Judith and, and Amy, um, and we failed miserably at the groundbreaking, we'll try it one more time. We are all in this together. When anyone makes a problem, we eat that. Any questions that we can answer for you? What we had before Schoology, I'll remind you, was we didn't have anything. Um, and that was a traditional paper and pencil model, so a lot of people, yes, would like to go back to that. Um, but like Willie said, um, we're going to have to step up our game in making sure that our parents are trained. And that is one of the reasons why we're recommending across the spectrum, K-12, of using that model, so that parents are not trying to navigate CTEA, and then navigating X, Y, Z, and then navigating Schoology, that we can train them all. So that even some kids have an older brother or sister, then they can help the younger ones.
This is a block schedule, a preferred schedule for high school teachers, and how does that impact, like, staff, K through twelve?
Um, as of right now, I don't see it impacting the K-6 staff, like, would it impact seven, twelve teachers? As of right now, the only information that we can operate under, um, is through with all the site team meeting, with our twenty-one site team members, and that was unanimous across the board, the recommendation they wanted to come forth, that has gone out, all of the in-membership. Um, and at two o'clock tomorrow, we're going to kind of explain what that would look like to try to get feedback from the Y membership people.
I have a couple of questions. Earlier in the presentation, and by the way, what, will your...
your PowerPoint be available online as a document for us? There was a lot of information in that. Please post it on Board Book. Thank you. So you said, teachers would be trained on the most effective directing, direct learning, what, methods? Did you have any particular program or thing in mind? Because I, let me just, I'll just say, I'll go on to say that we are now members of EMRIA, Minnesota Rural Education Association, and they have contracted for, for just this purpose. And they have a, kind of a breakdown of scale of what it would cost as members. And they have a contract with proximity learning, and I know that's probably one that you're all familiar with, and there are others. But I would just make you aware that we belong to this organization. They already have a contract, probably get a better deal, and they do help teachers, especially it's about distance learning and how to come up to speed. And they've, they've started trainings in August now, every week. I think it's a forty-hour program, but it's broken up into different pieces. So I don't, have you looked into the proximity learning for direct instruction?
We're going to consider, probably consider all options, all, all things. We want our teachers to be trained, but we're going to look at collaboration with the staff, who invited from, from teachers, what they need, and then we'll try to provide that. And it will be a factor, members among their staff, like, in leadership there. So we'd have to thank you for bringing that up. Another resource.
Yeah, please, yeah, please check into that. And then, I think the, the, the survey talked about parents transporting their children to and from school, and you had a certain response. But first of all, the survey itself, this is just a survey. Are you considering it a, a commitment of parents of what they're going to actually do in the fall? So I think there's a difference there.
I mean, five things today.
Yeah, so.
It gives us guidance right now. And what we, we may well have to do another question. We're talking, it's just going to be done from tonight's decision that you guys have to make, the board has to make, ultimately forward. We're going to have a lot, a lot of things to get done.
I think it'd be helpful for the board to know what commitment that the parents are actually going to make, you know, and then for us to make our decision. I know the surveys like the best that we have at this point in time. But as it was discussed at an earlier meeting or two today, that, that could be totally different when the doors open. And then as far as the parents transporting their children to and from school, I don't know the ins and outs of it, but there is some legislation about, there is transportation aid for each student. And if parents transport, there could be some complication of parents being reimbursed for transporting their students because of transportation aid. So we also, we have to look into that. Well, it may, may or may not be. We, I think, I just, just a question that we, well, that I had.
And that was, and that is only parents volunteering to do that. That's not us telling parents anything on transportation. It's just the reality is that we have X percent of parents who voluntarily just choose to drive their kids to school and take pressure on the bus. And Bob will talk about the bus here in a few minutes. But yeah, there is a transportation for any one of the kids, and if parents want transportation, it's a criteria we will provide.
Okay, thank you. I do have some transportation questions, so I'll, we'll wait until you give your presentation there. And then the block scheduling thing, this is the first that I've heard of block scheduling tonight. And it's a big step to take. Evans Gilbert tried it some years ago, and we dumped it. We felt it didn't work. It wasn't successful. There's, there's, there's a lot to it. And I, I just don't see a reason to jump into it right now so quickly. And we've got a couple of, a couple of weeks left to school. There's so many things to consider about block scheduling. It's a whole different philosophy. It's not just a schedule. And so I, I feel very strongly about just jumping into that at this point in time.
Well, I guess for one, I would like to applaud our admin team. We just found out that the governor was putting this on the shoulders of local districts a couple of weeks ago. And in that amount of time, you've managed to really pull together as a team, united across, you know, the old districts, and come up with a plan that is warranted under a pandemic. I don't know that we'd be considering a block schedule had it not been for a worldwide pandemic. But I'm impressed that you've been able to come up with more hour, more minutes of instruction during the day and not less in light of what we're experiencing right now. So I just want to applaud our admin team on that. And if there aren't any more questions for our admin team, then I would invite Stale Braxton to talk about.
I have a question. Is the six minutes more of instruction or whatever it is, is that because you've reduced the passing time? We used to have ten minutes between classes and passing time. And is, is that part of the reason that there are more instructional minutes?
No, it's because you have fewer passing periods. So in the past, you had to have six or seven passing moments, but now you only have three. So.
So, so under your scenario, would there be like a ten-minute passing time?
Seven, I believe, right now.
Seven? You think, you think that's enough between eighty-nine-minute courses? I mean, there's just so many things to think about. And that's not my reason for, I think we need to, and the board, this is, I think it's a board decision that we need to really have.
It is, and we will have an opportunity to consider that at the end.
Not just, I just mean in not one meeting. That's my point.
But that's where we're at with the pandemic. So Director.
I, I don't think it's pandemic-related.
I've moved on to Director.
But you have a, you have a tendency to cut people off and to cut me off, Stacy. And we're here to have an opportunity.
With all due respect, Director Safer has the floor.
Well, I hadn't been done talking yet, so. Go ahead, Kelly.
The one thing that I wanted to bring up for, that did impress me when I, when I heard, I heard Oliver's to speak last week, is the block schedule. For the fact that one of the most difficult pieces of how to do this, of how to make it work, is to minimize risk as much as we can, and to control exposure as much as we can. So the high school, seven through twelve, is automatically faced with much more challenges than the elementary is faced with because of the, the need and how it's been set up for kids to be changing classes and everything else. So I think that is in itself, so I, I agree that, you know, would we want to spend much more time in creating, doing this? Yes. However, I also think it's, you're having to weigh the risk and benefit. And I do feel that the risk is for, is minimized by having block scheduling, and the benefit is to allow our students and parents to be able to send their kids back to school in person at the evenest as limited time. Because clearly, eighty percent of our district is wanting that. And so I really do, I think there would so much that have to be considered. And you guys, I echo what Stacy said. You guys have done a phenomenal job, I think, addressing as much as we can because everything is changing, and today may look different, I just thought it would be. And I just really think that, I had so many worries. And when I heard you guys speak last week, I was able to let out a breath of fresh air, knowing that you guys were really on top of it and trying to combat everything how it was. And I really am. And the other thing on waiting to make a decision, the number one thing I'm hearing from our community members and parents and, is that they're a little frustrated that we're making the decision now versus a week ago. So they are waiting for us to make the decision, and then they are going to respond to that. They're not, we can't wait for the parents to give us some insight into what they, I mean, the survey is insight. We have a pretty good response rate, response rate for our district. So, good guy.
And that's one of the things that I got listening last week, that the parents that were there, they have, they still had questions. They were, they were still comfortable after hearing all of the precautions and reasons. And in discussing the block scheduling and some of the teachers that I know, they're going, this is the way we have to do this. And is it, we have to try it. And what this does, like you said, it eliminates the contact, it eliminates the chance for someone, a room of students, to get the disease or the virus. So, or try to, or trying to. And I think that's the biggest thing that we can do right now, is we've got to work hard at being creative and go together and work it out. And I think, appreciate that.
Director.
Yeah, the one thing that impressed me on it is the fact of relationship building. I mean, these, these are kids, young adults coming back, and they're, this is a whole new world for them. And if we can keep them with the same teacher for a longer period of time and build those relationships so they can be comfortable coming back to school, I think it's in our favor.
I like the fact that kids will have more opportunities to take different classes as well. Because I know what you're talking about with, you know, if they're taking a band class, they're not able to take, you know, they might just be pigeon-holed into taking just bass or, or just, you know, general art or something, and they'll have more opportunities. I like, I like that.
Thank you.
There you are. Yeah, no worries. How we're trying to tackle this, coming back to school with COVID from the technology part, is rolling out new devices that we purchased. So new iPads for every student, K-three twelve. They'll, on day one, they'll have an iPad that'll be ready for them with the app loaded on there that they'll need to start school right away. Also, rolling out new laptops for all of our staff, so everybody's on the same playing field. A lot easier to collaborate on lesson design, especially when we move on to distance learning. There'll be a really big key component there. And we also have a hundred and eighty hotspot coming in next week from AT&amp;T that will be able to be utilized to hand out to families that don't have high-speed internet availability. We do have to move into a hybrid, and to support the family that have chosen to go distance learning from the get-go. So that was a number that we saw last spring, that we had to outfit for whole school districts combined for providing distance learning access hotspots. So we've got that set up this year. And actually, we're able to, with a little bit more time, we can come on our hands, we're able to find a solution that was over, less than twenty bucks a month, of course, to fifty bucks a month, or for that service charge. So that was a really big cost saving for gathering. And these are actually full-blown real hotspots, of course, the phone that we used last year. So these ones, we'll be able to put into house, and it'll just work nonstop. Whereas before, they had to kind of fiddle with the phone a little bit to get to it. It'll be a lot more seamless. Any questions?
One of the questions last week was, I don't know, thought of that, is that since the kids are, the ability to go outside, you said you're going to be able to purpose some of those flashlights.
Yeah, so we do have the ability to, we're going to find the spaces outside of our building where teachers find that they gravitate to to teach class outside, the common areas that make sense for doing that. We're going to try to push Wi-Fi into those locations so that they can use their devices outside, outside of the school building. We've got some, we purchased some access points last year just for that purpose, and we'll be able to recover those pretty easily.
Really?
Yeah. And then, yeah, so we also have Wi-Fi on the buses as well. So if, if we have, maybe we can place those in locations providing Wi-Fi as well. Any other questions on tech?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now to, Dr. Safer.
I just want to tell you a little bit about what's going on on the buses. It's going to be challenging on the buses, but safety of the kids with COVID, all this stuff, and what happens actually on, daily on the bus, from a safety standpoint, is paramount to me. So I want to make sure that the kids are taking care of themselves. We're going to be cleaning the buses after every AM and PM route. We're going to be cleaning them after every extracurricular route that the drivers drive. We're going to be using an EPA-registered disinfectant on the bus. And I also got it approved by IEA, who is our safety advisor for the school district, and taking a look at it. Drivers who feel sick, if any driver feels sick for any reason, I'll tell them to stay home. And we'll deal with them on a case-by-case basis. We'll find a driver to cover for them. Custodial staff, everybody has committed, we step up if there's a problem. Drivers will be required to use face masks. I'm going to have visors on the buses for each one of them if they choose to wear them. They'll have gloves on the buses if they choose to wear them. The seat behind the driver, right directly behind the driver, and the one to their right will be left vacant. They're going to be taped off so that the kids are away from the drivers. We're going to keep the hatches open when, when weather is permitting, when we can. I have also talked to our, we have a contractor for the school district that does a lot of our special ed transportation. She's committed to me that they will clean their bands each day two on their touchpoints. I may provide some face masks to her, just to make sure that she has them, and that she's using them. So she has committed to me that everything's going to be fine on that. From a kid's standpoint, they're going to be required to wear masks on the bus. I'm going to have both adult and pediatric masks on the bus, so that if they forget theirs at home or in the break room or they lose them, we've got. Parents, I'm going to encourage parents to come to the bus stops with their kids. It's going to put more people at the bus stop, but they need help in social distancing while they're at the bus stops. So I'm going to encourage that. We're going to encourage students to stay apart. If we can rely on the survey, thirty-one percent, only thirty-one percent of the kids possibly could ride the bus. So that's good for us, keeping the kids apart. We're going to encourage them to use hand sanitizer when they're on the bus. Now, I've had hand sanitizer stations installed in almost every one of the buses. They're still working on it. But there will be hand sanitizer on every bus available to the kids if they need it. Each bus is going to have signage. It's going to be both in a pictograph-type situation, and so that it can be read, so that hopefully the kids will understand what that means. And we have to discourage any eating of food and drink on the bus. They're not supposed to be eating food or drinking on the bus as it is, but now we really have to kind of insist on that. If there is an open house at the school, and I, I'm not quite sure where they're going with open houses yet, I'm going to talk to the parents and kind of insist that the safety has to flow from them on how to act on the bus, and how to make that bridge, safety bridge, to us. Because we're going to be the first one in the morning to see the kids, and the last one when they pull in at night. Any questions?
Well, I saw on the news, what they, I mean, New York City, they're loading from the back of the busload, not very good to pass by anything, the guy's looking.
That's, yeah, yeah. We're going to try to load the buses from the back forward and unload them from the back so that they're not tripping over each other. Problem with that, only problem with that is if you've ever been on a bus and you have, you know, when they pull into parking, they all jump out of the seats. And that's going to be kind of hard to sleep, but we're going to test to do that.
Any questions? So would the bus drivers be cleaning the buses?
Yeah.
What about the teachers in the classrooms? Would they be cleaning their own classrooms to go back to the last presentation?
Don't know about that.
And would that cross over lines between teacher work and absentee work? I, I forgot to ask that question.
I think that the teachers, you know, the teachers, the teachers are going to have to play a role, along with the custodians, in some shape or form. Early in the year, I ordered a bunch of, we couldn't get Lysol, but we got a generic form of Lysol. And my intent was to get one for every room for the teachers so that they had them. I only got half the shift, and people couldn't get it. So that, some of that stuff is there. What they're going to do in the private room, that's kind of the principles. Where are they going?
I think we'll have, we'll have to do.
That's a good question. Just to let the board know, we're having another meeting with the parents and admin and teachers on Wednesday at five o'clock to talk. Just goes to the board note, we're having another meeting with the parents and, and the teachers on Wednesday at five o'clock, um, to talk about questions like that. Um, what do we do about that? And these are some of the broader details, there's so much detail we have to cover and go over. And so, we also do need, um, two board members. We're looking for something exciting to do Wednesday at five o'clock. Could be the same to, could be due to, um, that's, that's the Gilbert Media Center. We'll start talking more about some of the COVID plans and we'll put everything together and depending what you decide tonight, we'll send that all out to the parents.
I've been reading that districts all over in, in our state, they're having trouble finding bus drivers. And how is that going to affect...
Every district has trouble finding bus drivers.
I know, but especially...
Every single one. Last, two years ago, Genoa Ramsey District, Genoa District was forty-one short on COVID days.
But especially in this case now, are we, do you anticipate we'll have a problem finding bus drivers?
I have not been contacted by any of our bus drivers that they are not coming back. I do have one who has some major medical problems which may, uh, he may not be able to come back, but I talked to him yesterday and he wants to come back. It's just going to be a call on him and his doctor, it's going to be the final call.
I was thinking more along the lines as if, uh, you know, we're going to have either fifty percent or thirty-one percent at a time and that we would need either more buses. And if we need more buses, we need more bus drivers if we, if we have more students to transport than we can or want to, and that's where it led me to the shortage of a bus driver and bus.
Are, are you saying we need more buses so we can cut down on the number of kids in the buses?
That's my question, yeah. If we're only going to run at thirty to fifty percent capacity and we, we need to transport them, will we need more buses and drivers?
Shouldn't.
Okay.
Shouldn't.
Can you clarify that? Did you say thirty percent are only meaning to ride?
Yes.
Can ride the bus?
That's, that's up, probably, that might be a, um, thirty percent of students are only meaning to ride the bus transportation.
I have written thirty-one percent can ride the bus.
No, he said, he said based on the survey, I think, is it?
Based on the survey.
It was fifty-five, fifty-five percent said that they would be able and willing to transport their child independently. Fourteen percent said it was not applicable because they were within walking or biking distance. Thirty-one percent had said that they, that no, they would not be able to do transportation, we would totally rely on just the district to fly.
Okay, so I misunderstood because I do know that there are districts that are saying they will only let fifty percent capacity on bus. And then I thought you said we would go even lower to thirty-one.
As far as I know, there are no restrictions right now.
There are two in the hybrid tunnel that would be a potential restriction of up to fifty percent capacity, but in scenario one.
Right, that's what I was, thank you.
Yeah, don't listen to me, let me, uh, I'm not respirating.
Yeah, Murray will be there.
Um, before I ask for volunteers, I'm going to, I'm going to ask if Murray, um, or Kelly want to, um, recap anything or everything from a board perspective.
I think, um, from a board perspective, I have a list of different costs. So, there are some great ideas, but everything has a cost to it. So, someone had thrown out, if some of our, um, once we see the transportation numbers of schools, we need to leave us. If the, we have quite a few kids who there's issues on the bus, would we look at putting in a TA or someone to be able to assist with the bus or, or someone to ride to help supervise? So, that was thrown out, great idea, but there's a cost. The Pepsi glass, I know what, um, the officials have said that they were tapping into that, um, whether or not that is an option, it's an additional cost. Someone had thrown out additional nursing, whether or not nursing was going to be looked at, um, of needing additional nursing to help with management and supervision and monitoring assistance or things like that. And at this time, the school district is not looking at additional nursing, but I thought that was a good, um, thing to kind of play in the back of my mind to keep in mind as we, their goal in the future, we're going to make sure we're tapping in with our nurses. And then just additional costs, you know, whether it's, I'm assuming we will need to have, um, disposable masks available for, uh, in all of the schools. I, and my employees have many reusable masks, but if people forget them or things like that. So, that's, they had a, um, they talked about, they talked about, you know, like whether, um, to use gloves when, when the media center is a check-up bus. I actually don't think that that would necessarily be needed because it's an additional cost where there's no difference in using gloves versus using hand sanitizer. So, making sure someone there, you know, making sure someone there has, has rights, and someone's walking into, using hand sanitizer when they're walking into the media center and then when they leave. So, yeah, great ideas, just watch forward for that.
Maybe you want to add?
Uh, one of the things that, um, Dr. Smith brought up right way is that not only do the bus drivers, the teachers, the administration, custodians, parents, everyone, but the, uh, visitors, everyone has to be, become smarter in the way that we do things. Masks, the social distancing, um, trying to keep them away, no contact, I think, that type of stuff. I'm going to keep going, so, uh, again, helpers on the bus, you mentioned that. Because the drivers, you said that very blatantly, drivers need to drive.
It's, yeah, I mean...
They can't worry about the horseplay or the face masks on or...
Well, they have a dis, they have a discipline piece to the puzzle.
Right.
But their job is to drive that bus and watch what's going on around that front bumper and outside.
You were able to supply helpers, so... Um, the one thing I got last week, and it was mentioned numerous, I had to fight all of the industry, building the relationships. How important that is to kids. And when it's important for the kids, I just, it adds, for the parents and grandfathers and cousins, I just, it's, it's important for parents to know that you value the kids. That's what the teachers do that. And you mentioned that the, uh, kids would be exercising in the room. And I think it's an old elementary, old elementary teacher.
Very old.
Yeah, I don't know. Those stones moving in my house. That, uh, we used to do that a lot and, uh, I mean, it takes some creativity, but it does work. Uh, Wi-Fi trade capability for outside, um, block scheduling minimizing the exposure, limiting the movement. Limit lockers and backpacks, I don't know how that's going to work. I don't know if some kids just, but that's something that, I don't know, so... The one thing I also got last week from the block scheduling was credit retrieval or recovery. And, you know, there's a lot of times, say that I know a person is quarantined for fourteen days and they don't finish that class, but they need that class. Well, all of a sudden, now they have this extra block or left it or enrichment or whatever, they can use it for credit retrieval and recovery. And I thought that was, worked pretty good. I know that Indian Ed still needs to be worked on, right? Sure that could be part of it. Can you, can you kind of explain that there's distance learning and they're struggling at home? It was, I think you said we're going to try with the best we can to get them to come to school.
I think what you're referring to is really kind of a people issue. Anybody that electing distance learning, they have to have a one-to-one conversation. It simply cannot be, I'm going to collect this on the online survey and then I become a first-hand worker next week. We'd not do that. So, it would all, I think, we're done, uh, the administrators or school counselors or support staff to make sure it will come together, a purposeful schedule for each kid that needs to be virtually. Um, and that might look like some might come in for something and say, oh, for others, and we might see models that follow the model sometimes, um, if numbers allow and do something like that. But then the second part of that is that we're going to have two sides of the point. We're going to have kids that elect distance learning and they're struggling, they're falling apart, they cannot get logged in, they're just, it's not working for them. And we need to have the flexibility to bring them back. We have, we have some kids that elect to be there in person and then something happens, somebody in their family gets sick, um, things change in our community, here's, um, become more real to them. And they may choose to go distance learning now or hold it back. Kids don't change their mind every, every week because that can be very challenging from a staffing model. But we'll do the best we can to allow that flexibility because things are the way it keeps, we're in the middle of something unprecedented. Um, not all of the decisions we're going to make are exactly what we would choose in a real world, uh, when it comes down to the best we can.
Um, one of the other things that I kind of put in, made me feel better was listening to people talk about the IEP. You know, because we do have a share of special kids that need an IEP and IEPs have to be redone every year. So, they're going to be redone again this year. Now, we've got just, we're working on with the COVID, so, so that, um... The sub-teacher protocol, I haven't heard anything about that. Oh, I'm not going to take everything.
Are you sure?
The one thing you mentioned last week, um, was, well, there's two things. The COVID waiting room in the buildings and then truance, could you address those? Hopefully the only.
Yeah, I, I have a room identified and have my captain order, the governor's original orders that we should not, you know, they don't pay the office or cost on a, like, place, always be in the, in the, in the, second one. Five places, um, we have, and then, that's a question, one of the truance, truance, um, last spring, we, we think were that, and this year, we will be, uh, attendance is better, so we should be able to do this in learning and, and that will happen. Yeah, it's time today, I'm looking for teachers that they don't, um...
And with those numbers, the way that you gave them to us, I believe, you know, thirty-eight kids, forty kids, you know, they're easy to keep traffic, do great jobs. All right, we're distance learning.
That's another advantage, we can do it in that classroom, get logged every time you take your time, they count the numbers, it shows where they're at with the board. So, you can easily totally just take time with that classroom.
Before I get to you, Director Stater, Principal Spelt, did you have something you had to ask?
That's, um, where we have kids that maybe start struggling, we were talking, that's what we were using, our Title I teams, our Title I teachers, who are, I'm, uh, twenty-six kids, we work with them, on them, right? They can call home, I know what they, I know what the barriers are, we'll personalize that, to be honest, that's a big asset for us to be able to do. Those people will basically adopt those struggles, yes, last spring it worked incredibly.
Thank you. Director Stater?
Yes, I just had to do two things about that. So, on the bus route, are we looking at, um, and I asked our, my own health insurance for my two daughters, but also for other siblings, are we mandating that, is that family unit sit together?
They should.
Thank you.
They should sit together.
Like, that would make sense to me, but it's not something, it doesn't have to make sense?
Right.
So, um...
They should.
Okay, that would make sense to me on trying to cluster family units together. I know, yeah, I'm going to get another email now from all the students, and then the other thing quick was, one of the other things that came up is the poll chart. So, um, St. Louis County has a nice COVID dashboard that I would encourage board members and, um, school personnel and community members to look at. It does have a breakdown for the schools. Um, it has the, the loop public school, which includes the permanent tractor school, and then it has greater, St. Louis County, which is the rest of us, um, show individually where each of our numbers are lying. But then there's also information to, um, their Department of Health and everything on the poll chart, like what happens for contact, trace, safety, and stuff like that. And what happens if a kid gets sick in classroom, I mean, is everyone having to be quarantined? What is that going to look like? I think the more information and, so I pulled up what, um, what the state has in three and a half pages. So, I think the more that we simplify the poll charts and share them with family members, um, as a district of how we're going to handle that kind of stuff, um, and what they can express and everything, just so they see that there is a clear plan. And rather than just referencing, uh, Minister or Department of Health, um, stage for it.
That's a good point.
Simplify it, a poll chart or something for families.
Director Stater?
Uh, related to the conversation about, um, COVID rooms or when students or anybody get sick, um, are, is it in the plan to take the temperature of every student every day or every so often or every week? Or, and when would that happen and who would do it? How would we screen students?
Um, that is one of the questions we'll talk about on Wednesday night at six o'clock, how to do that. We're looking at some options for that. Um, the temperature, it, it seems like it would be quick, but what we want to avoid is have the kids pile up at the door, um, to get the temperature checked and then if you get false positive, it's not accurate. And it doesn't have COVID, but we will have to do something like that. Uh, we're looking at some other options to see if we can do it faster, some other ways. But yes, look, it's kind of the sometimes it's just a, where we're checking individuals on a regular basis.
How has that affected our budget, uh, all these KPEs, these, uh, you know, masks and shields and thermometers and has it affected our budget greatly so far?
Um, it's not helping your budget. Uh, but at this point, uh, money we're spending on this, uh, we're trying to create a safe atmosphere while also creating, uh, viable learning environment, um, and so our kids and parents, we're helping a value in Rock Ridge. Um, and so, we're going to spend some extra dollars creating that safe environment.
And you said that you, in a previous meeting, you said that you already ordered, was it fourteen thousand disposable masks and you ordered face shields and stuff already?
We have pointed to, but we also have kids who are going to be given them the masks literally every day, um, let's see what's going to happen. So, we have reserves and we have more coming.
Any other questions or any discussion at this point? Otherwise, we can move on to the motion. There is a resolution in the board packet, um, Agenda Item nine point three point eight is to consider the adoption of the base learning model for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and other COVID nineteen-related matters.
I would move that motion except I would, with the change on page two, section two, that, um, about the superintendent, um, without the school board making a decision if a different learning model is necessary. Because statute gives boards and public entities the, uh, ability to have emergency meetings without the three-day notice and, uh, in such circumstances as this. So, I think that's really unnecessary. So I think that's really unnecessary, that I think that the school board decision initially, and if there's a change to be made, we could have an emergency meeting with all of the, all of the, um.
Director Sorkin, just so I understand, you're making a motion to stop the resolution, but amend section, section two, um, that gives discretion to the superintendent or authority to the superintendent to make a decision regarding the, um, learning model?
Just eliminate section two, I believe it's not necessary.
Eliminate section two in its entirety?
Yes.
There's support? Any support? Any support? Motion fails.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution. Hold on.
A motion by Director Sather, support by Director Lottegar. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to reference why I wasn't a supporter of moving to section two. And my understanding, um, with this model that we're adopting and, um, recognizing the need to go between the three scenarios. It's, um, Superintendent Schmidt is going to be taking a lot of direction based on what our numbers are looking at within our communities. And it is the, uh, my understanding from the Governor Walz that it is expected to be changed over within forty-eight hours. So I do believe that that needs to be a quick response. Um, it is, I mean, the three scenarios, we are all in agreement to them or that's what we're recognizing and knowing that we may be moving between. So I am comfortable with that, staying with, with, um, Superintendent Schmidt.
And again, I'd just like to reiterate that, uh, if, if it's, uh, a duty or responsibility of the board to initially pick one of the plans, I think if any changes are made, it should be the board. And again, we could have an emergency meeting according to law and there would be no time loss. I just think it's a board decision, either way, and any changes.
Any additional discussions? Any additional discussions?
I'd just like to echo the boss announcement, the administration. And, and everyone involved for what they've done, I mean, it was eighty-six businesses ago that we finally got direction. So where this department of education wanted us to go and it's brutal to say everyone's working.
And this is an MSBA, um, resolution format.
I will now take a roll call vote. Oh, sorry.
I would move that way, go ahead.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to reject, uh, the resolution to support optioning.
Thank you, Director Sather.
Support.
And support by Director Lottegar. Any additional discussions? All right, I will take a roll call vote. Director Camaro?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Schober?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Farabu?
Yes.
Director Yuha, Yuhang?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Lottegar?
Yes.
Director Sather?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
No.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes, ten yays, one nay. Agenda item ten is board member topics. Does anyone have any board member topics?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Oh, this is. Um, I spent my two dollars last week. I got a great little package of review of material. And, uh, on one of the sheets, it was qualities of a school board member. You know, and I, I, I read them and I read them. And I'm sitting here going, maybe we should read them more often. Best interest of all students, passionate about public education, ability to make a difficult decision by showing up at meetings, willing to listen, democratic process, time and energy on school board business, uh, committed to MSBA training, function as part of a team, collaborate and be trusted. And then it mentioned, you know, a policy that we all cast unanimously. And I got to the section four A, or section two, A four, excuse me. And it, uh, it talked about abstaining from votes. And there's only one reason for, for that. And I know that I did that a couple of weeks ago and that was, it was on, you know, you're only abstaining because of a conflict of interest. And Tim and I did it tonight, I'm on the Blue Pride, he's on Community Foundation. And, uh, you know, I want to apologize because the only reason I abstained a couple of weeks ago is because I was just frustrated. And that was not a conflict of interest. And, uh, I just hope that we realize that abstentions only happen or only take place because we have a conflict of interest. Not because you don't want to make a vote, not because we feel frustrated. And I, again, I want to apologize and I, I'm not trying to lecture, it's just, that's, I wanted to bring that.
Thank you, Director Anderson. Any other?
Because sometimes it's not easy to, you know, admit when you've made a mistake or, or anything. So the fact that you're saying that shows your character, so thank you, Greg.
I have stayed, I stayed vote, I just didn't understand what we voted on. The reason or not.
Well, now we all know.
I said it when I kept saying, I didn't know what we were voting on.
Um, any other board member topics?
I, I don't know if this is appropriate time or not, but, um, just want to reiterate the importance of having alternates for, um, committee meetings. I just, it's, it, it'll happen for me, it'll happen for other board members that we have other things going on and we can't attend meetings. And I think it's important to have representation there, enough board members to make a decision. So, um, I, again, recommend that we have alternates or come up with a board decision on how we're gonna handle it if we do know that we have a conflict and can't attend one of our committee meetings. Because, you know, maybe, maybe it's not signing up, maybe it's just we agree as a board that if we can't attend a committee meeting, we contact one of the board members and say, hey, can you sit in for me? Whatever the board wants to do, I just highly recommend it.
Thank you. Um. Agenda item eleven, unfinished business?
I, I mean, um, Mr. Schmidt will also, Superintendent Schmidt will also say something about this. But, um, the budget and finance committee meetings happened today.
Good point, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. And I just want to, to, um, discuss a little bit that at the July first meeting, we had talked about the, um, we passed the budget because we needed to pass the budget. And it had been mentioned there or recommended that we have a budget and finance committee to discuss, I gotta take this off for a second. Um, to discuss some of the budget items that Evelyn Gilbert just didn't pass and had tabled, um, right before we merged as a consolidated district. And we did have a discussion on, specifically on the third grade and sixth grade and the cutting of a section for those grades. And, um, part of the discussion, um, Kelly was there as well, she's supposed to speak to that, whoever else was there. But, um, you know, with, with the numbers being at the bubble and with us being uncertain what families are keeping their, their students home at the beginning of the school year because of COVID concerns. Um, and, and because we got information earlier today, as well as in the meeting, about how many that took that survey, um, that had third grade and sixth grade students said that they were keeping, you know, they're, they would like to keep their students home. Because of that, it, it made sense financially to, um, not have a third section of grade three and grade six. And those were the reasons. And I also looked at, um, the average class size for K through six. Again, not good at math, but I think I did all right. Um, but I looked at the average of what class sizes are, um, at Evelyn Gilbert, K through six, as well as Virginia, K through six. And Evelyn Gilbert was at, um, I think it was twenty-two point zero nine in a classroom. And Virginia's was twenty-two point nine five. So it's, it, it, it's pretty equal. So just so everybody is aware, we did have that discussion. We followed through in what we said we were gonna do. And I just wanted to be transparent and communicate that.
Thank you for bringing that up. I totally would have forgotten it, missed it, but, yeah. And I think the, in keeping with the theme of the start of the school year, we're just gonna be flexible and see what happens.
And I think that, you know, I think everybody deserves to be proud about that because we're, we are all, we're all doing the best that we can do in a situation that many of us have never been in before. So I, again, other board members have, um, thanked administration for everything they've done. I want to do that same thing.
Anyone else? Gosh. Um, does anyone else from the finance and budget meeting want to add anything? Okay. Oh, yes. Um. Yeah. Okay. So, um, this was a re, so we, I do need a formal motion on the resolution telling the school board vacancy by appointment. I'm sorry, I did not pass this out.
I think the motion was made.
Oh, we made a motion.
But I think we have dropped the resolution.
Okay, let's go back to.
Do you want a different person making the motion or do you want the same?
Totally up to you. I'll move the resolution. Okay? Support?
Support.
Um, any additional discussions? Any additional discussions? Any additional discussions? Okay, I will take a roll call vote. Director Farabu?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Schober?
Aye.
Director Mannanen?
Aye.
Director Camaro?
Aye.
Director Sather?
Aye.
Director Lottegar?
Aye.
Director Yuhang?
Yuhang, yes.
Director Sorkin?
Nay.
And Director Sunquist?
And Director Reardon.
What's the answer, Director Reardon?
Yay.
Uh, resolution passes ten yay and one nay.
Um, and just to reiterate on what I commented about both those budget finance, because I forgot to mention it, but, um, in that survey for distance learning, seventeen third grade students, uh, families said that they would distance, do distance learning. And, um, ten of the sixth grade students from Evelyn Gilbert said that they would distance learn.
Thank you. Um, as far as those, any additional public comment regarding? Okay. Uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
We have to leave the announcement.
What?
I have comments. You didn't allow for public comments that you normally do at the end.
And can you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name's Catherine DeSraft.
Okay.
Um, and I would like to say, to thank that the group that got together that finally came up with plans. However, I am, um, appalled at the fact that Duluth has had a plan since May or whenever the governor came up with it, three different scenarios. Um, secondly, um, the fact that you switched to block scheduling. Right now, students need consistency and so they need consistency. They need to have a similar schedule, especially with the consolidation. Everything's uncertain, it makes parents uneasy, it makes students even worse and more uneasy. I know my daughter, for example, is, is very uneasy about, like, all the changes and just everything with that. Um, and I guess just the fact, like, the more you can be consistent as to what it was last year. Granted, I know we're in a pandemic and I understand that, but that's not a reason to completely change schedules to a block scheduling instead of the regular scheduling, um, that was. And I understand some of the changes, but if we, if you really truly believe that pandemic calls for all these instances, um, consolidation, like, and just putting, stopping things on consolidation would help. Um, there are things that can be postponed and focusing more on the student's education. Duluth already has, where they have, um, a, a sheet, a survey that went out, that went out way back in July to get parent feedback, the percent, you guys are relying way too much on the survey. The percent of respondents of the survey was not very high. Um, so who knows what parents are really gonna do on the fact that you're eliminating teachers before you truly know the numbers, um, the actual enrollment numbers, um, of what parents are gonna do is, is kind of concerning to me. Um, because teachers are kind of hard to find up here, especially good quality ones. Um, and I guess.
Sister, Sister Hap, we're, we're not eliminating teachers.
No. Well, I guess, I, okay, well, then that, that difference with the sections, I guess I don't fully understand what was done. But anyway, I guess, I guess the point is, is the more consistency. So, um, not having the block scheduling would probably help students. It's more of an emotional and psychological, like, like I said, there's gonna be enough with all the changes with PPE and not riding school buses and just all of that, that, you know, if students can just maintain what they had, like, with the scheduling and things, would really help them, um, just with the consistency. So, um, and the fact that you guys put it all together in this one and didn't really get, uh, parents' feedback on what the options are. And the other concern is, in the survey, the distance learning was only for semester one. And, um, if I was gonna do distance learning, I would want to do it for the full year and not go back and forth. That's part of the reason for picking distance learning, because you have that consistency instead of sending your student, bringing it back, sending them and doing hybrid. Because that, this past spring, like, with the uncertainty of, are we going back or are we not, caused a lot of just emotional, like, stress and that, on, you know, different families and kids. And it just, yeah. Um, so I guess I would have you, uh, consider or look into that. So, um, that's just my only comment, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and just before, I guess before we adjourn, our next regular board meeting is going to be held here or via teleconference or Zoom, um, at the Square of the Spectrum property on August twenty-fourth at six PM. Um, the early childhood committee meeting was this morning at eight. The budget finance was this afternoon at four. And ASME slash teacher negotiations committee meeting will be meeting August eleventh at noon in the Evelyn's boardroom. The policy committee meeting will be Tuesday, August eleventh at three thirty in the Evelyn's boardroom. And the activities committee meeting will be on Wednesday, August twelfth at four PM in the boardroom. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we adjourned?
Yes.
For the Wednesday evening for the new volunteers?
Oh, yes. Do we have volunteers?
Yeah, Murray and Kelly have that. That of girlfriends.
Thank you, Director Lottegar. Director Anderson. Uh, now a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same kind. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Kelly, I just sent you two links, did you get?